Call the meeting order, please. Call a roll.
Mr. Brooly?
Here.
Mrs. Escalante?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, our citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. And last, I ask that you address all comments, questions, and concerns to the chair. The floor is now open for citizens' comments.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Jarrett, and I live at 51 Ludwig in Mount Clemens. I am addressing the board, or the chair, as the candidate running for board position. And I graduated from Mount Clemens High School. My children graduated from Mount Clemens High School. Oh, wait a minute, my mom graduated from Mount Clemens High School. So, I live a couple blocks away, and I have vested interest in the school here, so I'm very excited. I have served in the service. I hold a bachelor's degree in computer science and a master's degree in information resource management. I have been studying the documents that are on the website currently, and familiarizing myself what you do and how you do it. I have also served as for the Optimist Volunteer Organization, and I am currently serving as the governor for the Michigan District until my term is ended, the end of this month. Let's see. I'm mostly concerned about the status of enrollment in the school at this time. It seems like it's really low, and I'm, you know, I'm hoping that there could be a positive shift in going up in attendance so that the school can grow again. I know there's, you know, it's up and down, but I feel this area is poised for growth and excitement. I think I'm almost done with my three minutes. I'm kind of ADD. I like to keep it short, sweet, and to the point. Thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to hopefully being on the board with you.
Thank you for your comments. Next citizen call. Citizens' comments, excuse me.
I'm Deena Panketi. I live at 56680 Stony Creek Drive in Shelby Township. I'm here today not as a union member or a voice for others, but to voice my own opinion. I've worked in the district for more than 25 years. The only time I've ever come before the Board for Citizens' Comments is today. I've always respected the Board as an oversight entity, an integral piece of the checks and balances within the district. But I'm here today asking for your help because I'm here today because I'm angry. Two years ago, I sat on the bargaining team for our current teacher contract, and when presented with the specifics of the district's financial information, I agreed that to keep the district operating, deep concessions across all district departments would be crucial. I put my hand up for a yes vote, knowing that it would cost me my house. I talked lots of others into putting their hand up, knowing that their families would be affected too. I believe that the administrative team would do their part to ensure that everyone in all areas would be diligent about making cuts. Now, two years in, with two years to go, I'm already worried that convincing others to vote for a contract next time won't be possible, and it's all about perception. Being here 26 years, I know about everyone. I have people approaching me almost daily from a variety of departments, starting conversations with, "Did you hear what they bought now?" I'm aware that there are rules about how funds can be applied. For example, maintenance issues are funded under different areas than staff payrolls or curriculum. We all are. But I'm no longer able to placate them or myself with that reminder. When I'm paying out of pocket for training to update myself on the new reading strategies or supplies to support my class, instead of paying back medical bills, I question whether the rumors of purchases like trailers for parade floats or new tables for the back-to-school bash are true, and if so, whether they're district needs or wants. It's all about perception. If you expect district leaders to support the board and administration by conveying positive messages, we, I, need either more transparency about why these types of items are needs, or I need you to strongly consider the purchases that are truly being authorized. People are watching. They're going to remember when it comes to vote again, and I will too. I once heard someone say, "Children don't need dessert, they need dinner." In other words, at least provide the best basic necessities you can, and then if you're able, add in the extras, the dessert. I'm counting on the board to ensure that the focus for our district remains on dinner, not dessert. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Last call, citizens' comments.
My name is Mary Campbell. I'm the MCEA president from King Academy, and I wanted to first comment on my vice president's message that she gave, and she did said she spoke not only as a union leader but as a teacher, but her message is a message that is being portrayed from all teachers and your union leadership also. There are concerns throughout the community without your teaching, your staff members, about expenses and the reasons for those expenses. So I would like you to please keep in mind and listen carefully, watch your videotapes, go back, listen to her message. It was well said. That being said, I also wanted to mention that our busing this year, the Trinity bus lists that have not been apparent in our schools, yesterday was the first time King Academy did receive a bus list, so we would know where our buses were going to, who was going to be on the buses, who was being picked up on the buses, and it has been a concern that we have shared with Trinity a number of times, myself included. I know our principals have asked, I know our secretaries have asked, but the busing this year has been about the worst in my 29 years of teaching in Mount Clemens. So I would encourage you to kind of investigate that. I know that it was a new bid had gone out, that they were the company that was awarded it. I'm not aware if they were the only company who had bidded for our busing or not, but by far, they are definitely not the best company at this point. So I would hope that to encourage, I have heard of parents who have withdrawn their kids because of the busing situation in Mount Clemens. So I would encourage you to look into that matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Seeing, hearing none. Moving the agenda. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, item A, approval of the minutes for the August 15, 2018 regular meeting. Item B, approval of the bills for payment. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item A, approval of the minutes for the August 15, 2018 regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Walker.
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item B, bills for payment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the bills for payment.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is executive session for the purpose of attorney-client privileged information. The chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session for said purpose.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. The board will come back in from the executive session and continue and complete the remainder of the items that are on our agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees.
Support.
Second, Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to come out of executive session? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. The board is out of executive session at 7:10 PM. Moving the agenda forward. Next item on the agenda, item seven, approve hiring staff for fiscal year 2018, 2019 academic school year. Approve hiring of a King School physical therapist. Background increase caseload necessitates the hiring of a physical therapist. Recommended action is to approve Dr. Ted DeChan as a physical therapist, King Academy, effective October 8, 2018. Mrs. Davis.
Yes. Thank you. As is stated, we do have increased caseload, and we would like to hire Dr. DeChan because the committee is recommending that, it was a committee of about, I believe it was four on this one, that interviewed him, checked his references, and we want to make it effective October 8 because he's had several clients right now, and it's going to take him a little while to transition and not leave those clients dry. So it is recommended that the board approves his position as the new caseload physical therapist.
Heard the recommendation. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. McFadden. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Walker. Any questions, discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Do we not normally receive background, either a biography or resume?
Yes, and I didn't attach it, so that's my thing. So I will get that to you.
Okay.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, seven B, approve hiring of secondary complex science teacher. Background, a teacher resigned necessitating the hiring of a secondary science teacher. The recommendation, recommended action is to approve Emily Holt as a secondary science teacher effective September 4, 2018. Mrs. Davis.
Yes. On this one, yes, we did have a resignation right before school started, and I believe it was in mid-August, the third week of August, that we received the resignation. And Ms. Holt applied. Her credentials were outstanding. The team reviewed her credentials, also did background checks, and she was the one that came out on top. And again, I will get you her resume.
Heard the background information and the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion.
So moved. I move that we approve the hiring of Emily Holt.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to approve the hiring of Emily Holt. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Mrs. Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Mr. Brooly?
Yeah, I'll vote for it, but what I would like to see in the future on these things, along with what Glenn mentioned, is I would like to see the effective resignation date. I would like to know when the person resigned, and I would like to know the people on the committee who were making the recommendation to us. So when did they resign? When did you get the official notice that they were going to resign? Then how much time did we have in between? And I know some of these things come quite quickly, so I would like to understand that. And I would like to know the committee of the people who are making this recommendation to us.
Okay.
I can put that in the form of a motion at an appropriate time, or it can be done, but I really, I will not vote to approve any more people unless we have that information.
Right.
I'll vote tonight, but from here on in, I will not.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Monk?
I concur with Mr. Brooly also. I would like to add to that, that the people who are interviewing our teachers understand that we need teachers who are coming from similar school districts as ours, because I think that's vital. Because of A1, classroom management. Two, because sometimes it could be a culture shock coming from one district to another district, and them not knowing what we're, you know, who we are and what we're about. But I, yes, I would like to, I'll vote for this one, but I'm agreeing with you too. I won't vote for any more unless all that material is submitted to us.
Any other questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yeah, I got a question or a comment. So what type of committee are we looking at? Are you talking about the hiring committee? You talking about the...
Yeah, the people, there's a people, there's a committee that recommends it. At the last meeting, we talked a little bit about that before, about, you know, who's on it. I wanted to make sure that there were at least a couple teachers. I want to know what member of the administrative staff, I would like the curriculum person involved in this process. They're going to be the person that goes to the classroom, that does effectiveness. So we're going to partly get a recommendation from the principal of the building, and we're going to get a recommendation from the curriculum person as to their effectiveness. So I want them involved in that process, but I'd also like to have a couple teachers on the committee so it's balanced, and that's, I want to know who's doing that.
So basically, gentlemen, you guys want the names of the people that's on the committee, and then what the recommendation against the superintendent?
Yep.
For the superintendent to say, "This is the committee we met, and this is, this is the way you want to move?" Correct, Mr. Monk? Is that about right?
Yep, with the background information.
And with a resume?
That we have teachers who could hit the ground running. And I hit the ground kind of, you know, kind of learn on the job. You know, I think, I think we're a district where we can't afford to bring teachers here that's learning on the job. They got to know they're positive, they got good class management, they got, you know, set up organized, you know what I'm saying, so that they can hit the ground running.
Okay. Madam Superintendent, was Ms. Holt, was she a student teacher here or something, or she came from another district, didn't she?
I think that was the one. I'll have to go back and look to confirm, but one of the teachers that we hired was a student teacher.
Was a student teacher.
And she transitioned. Oh, yes.
Okay. I brought that up because of the statement you was making about familiar with the district and similar district like ours. I believe one of these hirees was a student teacher or working in the middle school portion of business science. Is that correct?
She was hired over at Seminole as a third grade teacher.
That's right.
And she started over here.
Well, that's not put in the board package, you know what I'm saying, so we know all that.
Who they are.
Right, right.
We don't know who they are. You get what I'm saying? I mean, that'd add a little bit more light, you know what I'm saying?
I know, that's why I'm bringing it out right now, just to bring some light to the subject. I'm pretty sure we make sure that's what happened next time.
Yeah. I believe the one that you are talking about was a special education teacher that started over here, and then she went over to Seminole.
Well, there was one that was an actual student teacher that was from state.
Yeah, that's what I mean. She was from state.
And she was on...
But I'll give the background, okay, just to make sure that on each one of the candidates, okay? And I should be able to get all of the information that you've requested for each of the candidates, okay?
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, seven C, approve the hiring of Seminole Academy Behavior Specialist. Background information, a staff resignation necessitates the hiring of an elementary behavior specialist. Recommended action, recommended action is to approve Deborah Kenjorsky as the elementary behavior specialist effective August 28, 2018. Mrs. Davis.
Yes, again, because we did have a resignation, and I believe the board found out about this particular one. The resignation was in July, early July, and this person I know has worked with our type students, you know, in the past, and they're from the area. And she was a good fit, you know, looking at our students, and she clicked very well with the staff. And so because of that, we're recommending that the board would hire her. And again, I will get you her credentials and the members of the committee that hired her, and the effective date of the resignation.
Heard the background information and the recommended action. Chair would entertain a motion.
Before we go ahead and get this right into discussion, any questions? I know that's going to be the case.
No, no, I'm getting the motion on the floor first.
That's what I'm saying. If we can get it right there, I'm moving to approve.
Okay, thank you. Then moved by Dr. McFadden. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Mr. Monk?
Yes, is this one of the employees that we talked about in our past board, meaning to have the social work background?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And what kind is she? Just a SW, MSW?
When I get through that information, that will be in there as well.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
I hate to say this, but I feel like I'm voting on the seat of my pants.
I can...
I just, I'm having a real difficult time with this, as you can tell. I will vote for it, but I don't like it. I don't know these people. I believe that we need the background information. I'm sorry. That's the way I feel.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, seven D, approve hiring of Seminole Academy Physical Education Teacher. Background information, a teacher resignation necessitate the hiring of a physical, elementary physical education teacher. Recommended action is to approve Michael Stabnik as the elementary, elementary physical education teacher effective August 28, 2018. Mrs. Davis.
Again, this is a resignation from a long-term teacher that had been in our district for several years. And at the resignation, we did send out a request for a new hire, and because of his background and the way he interacted with staff, Mr. Stabnik was the one that was brought to me for recommendation for hire. Again, this is, I will get you all of the information that you requested for each of the candidates.
Heard the background, the recommended action. The chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Second, Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Mr. Monk?
Yes, I did a tour to elementary and high school, I believe, this past Monday, and visiting all the teachers, got to see their faces, a lot of, lot of, lot of learning going on, structure. And I actually visited with Michael in the gym for about 30 minutes. And in that 30 minutes, it seems to me that that was a good hire. He had kind of went through, explained to me, you know, he had all the structure stuff on the wall, how he gets them to kind of play games, how he gets them to interact with each other. And as, and I'll say, you know, it was a breath of fresh air to see something new, an idea going on with the kids over at Seminole. And he had, I mean, he said he hadn't gotten to the equipment room yet, but, you know, he seemed to be very organized, but I was truly impressed. He come from Hamtramck, I believe, area, so we kind of endorsed in that, because I'm from Detroit, so we kind of talked about, and I was familiar with the area he came from and the school district that he came from. So I just want to let the board know that I personally did talk to this individual on Monday when I did my tour, and he seemed that he, he's a good fit for us. And like I say, it's nice to see a fresh, I mean, we love the teacher that retired, you know, God bless her soul, but it's nice to see a new, young, vibrant, you know, physical education teacher that's going to get these kids going, so.
Any other questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Seven E, approve hiring of Seminole Academy Social Work/Behavior Assistant. Background, staff reassessments and student needs necessitate the hiring of an elementary social worker/behavior assistant. Recommended action is to approve Ronald Norfleet as the elementary school social work/behavior assistant. Mrs. Davis.
Okay, thank you. Again, because we did a reassessment with the staffing over at Seminole and looking at the needs, we had talked about this with the board, that our goal was to increase social work experience over at the elementary. And in doing so, we were fortunate to find Mr. Norfleet. He is working with Ms. Deborah Kenjorsky and also Ms. Dickinson. So the three of them, along with Ms. Monk and Ed Razniak, they have a very good rapport with each other. Mr. Norfleet is also a young man that came from our students' background, so he has a heart for our children, and so is everyone else that we're asking to, the board to recommend. Because of the MyExcel, we are using that as part of our hiring process. So anybody that hires in the district understands that we are a MyExcel district, and it is required that they understand our students' background. And Mr. Norfleet, again, works very well, interacts very well with Ms. And Mr. Norfleet, again, works very well, interacts very well with Ms. Kijorski and Ms. Dickinson. So with that, we are asking the board to approve Mr. Norfleet as our social worker Behavior Assistant at Seminole.
Heard the background and the recommended action. Chair would entertain a motion.
So move. I move that we hire Ronald Norfleet as Assistant Social Worker slash Behavior Specialist. Or Behavior, was it?
Social Worker slash Behavior Assistant.
Yeah, there it is.
Moved by Dr. McFadden. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments? Mr. Monk?
Again, is this one of the employees that we talked about, the director of Social Worker?
Yes.
Now, is, is, is he more of a social worker, kind of backup behavior? Or is he more behavior, backup social worker? How, how is he, how is he done the structure?
It's both, because of his social work background and his personal background and students that he's worked with in the past, he's able to relate to our students. So his social work background gives him the educational piece. And because of the environment that he grew up in, he has the heart for our children and the compassion. So he's using his educational skills to help the students with their behavioral skills.
And has he worked in a district like ours, with his background, or is he kind of fresh out of college, or?
And it's kind of like a combination. He's done some social work with students. And I can't remember the exact district because, but I will make sure that the board gets all of that information that was requested. But he was definitely a good fit. And his demeanor, everything that, he works really well with the staff that he's interacting with.
Any other questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor?
Madam Superintendent, Mr. Norfleet, he's the, he's the former basketball player, right?
Yes.
What, Detroit, Detroit, what, Persian or not Persian? I'm sorry, Mr. Monk, I'm thinking about you over there in competition and stuff. But he did play some, what, something like that?
Yes, he did. And, but he and Mr. Stab, Stabnik will be starting a, like a feeder program, basketball program with the students, along with Pete Trammell over here at the high school. But they want to get several different sports going for the students over at Seminole. And he and Mr. Stabnik are very excited to be able to bring that opportunity to all of the students over at Seminole.
Okay, yeah, I met him a couple times.
But yes, he does have a passion for basketball.
Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item seven F, approve hiring of Seminole Academy Third Grade Teacher. Background information, the resignation of a staff member necessitates the hiring of a third grade teacher. Recommended action is to approve the hiring of Julie Ann Court as the third grade teacher. Mrs. Davis?
Yes, again, unfortunately, we had another resignation at the start of the school year. And through the hiring process, and again, we do let all of the new hires know that we are working diligently with the MyExcel blueprint installation. And so from that, they do have to know the students that we educate. And with all of the applications she did, rise to the top. And, and the committee recommended Ms. Julie as, Julie Court as a replacement third grade teacher at Seminole.
You heard the background information and the recommended action. Chair would entertain a motion.
So move.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Second by Ms. Walker to approve the hiring of Julie Ann Court as the third grade teacher. Questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Mr. Monk?
Just, what is the resource room, what's resource room teacher? What is, what is that?
Oh.
That's elective, elective class, or?
No, it was a correctionist, that she said third grade teacher.
All right, mine says third grade teacher.
Oh, I might be looking at the, oh, oh, okay, got it, yeah, okay, okay.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Next, information items, item eight, August cash flow report. Are there any questions on the August cash flow report? Item nine, open purchase order listing. Are there any questions on item nine? Agenda item ten, contract listings. Are there any questions on the contract listings? Mr. Monk?
Ms. Davis, I know we, we talked in your office, where are we sitting with the contract with Trinity?
We are looking at a date to get together, finalize everything. I did get an email from them, what's it, Tuesday night? Yep, so that would have been last night, okay, that, they are going to be getting our new buses soon. It was just a matter of the transitioning and then getting everything together. Because there, we have a couple more students in special services. So they were trying to make sure that they got the right buses and all that, they wanted to do all of them at once. So we will have the band that says Mount Clemens Community Schools on the buses. And then a small notation in the corner that says operated by Trinity Transportation. And they are looking to make sure that we get, what is it, aids on all of the buses. So they, we're working on those things and they believe we'll be, we should be able to get everything signed up early next week. So we're just doing the final touches on the logistics, I guess, if you will. But yes, we will be getting the buses and they won't be older than five years.
Okay, I mean, my, my suggestion, I mean, how, how long we been with Trinity now? What, ten years? More than ten years?
There may be something.
Before we've been. Right. I think outside of two years, Trinity should know our routes. They should know our system. And we should have, I mean, you ain't gonna go through and have no problem, but we should have minimum to zero problems. And it just seems like every year, something is popping up with Trinity. And me as a board member, I'm getting frustrated, because they should know. We got Seminole, we got the high school, we got the middle school. You know what I'm saying? But it seems like issues come up with, with Trinity every single year. And it's, it's gotta stop. Well, let's find another company.
Well, but if I remember correctly, when we bid out last time, Trinity was the only one.
It was another company in Ohio.
Right.
That also did.
It was one of, we were stuck. I agree with you. We know what kind of company Trinity is. They don't pay well. They don't train well. And they're overextended, but we're kind of stuck. I mean, it isn't that, I think any of us don't want to see an improvement, but it was going with some national company from Ohio that had no record whatsoever, taking a chance on them, and then they would have to enter into support up here, which they didn't really have. And we would sort of be a district that was stuck out. So, I mean, we were sort of stuck. And part of our difficulty is being a district with no money. If, hopefully, at the end of this year, we're able to change some things. It's, it's, the state does not adequately fund school districts like ours. And they expect us to provide all the services. And we don't have the money to compete. I think, you know, I agree entirely with what you're saying. And I think we have probably new people every year, and they don't retain. And it's a real problem, but other than running our own bus system, which initially might be more expensive. And people got out of that because it costs too much to save money, but in the end, it provides you lousy service.
Well, I bought this up before. I don't know, it never got legs, and maybe it needs to get legs now. Have we ever contacted the ISD? I mean, there was one time we was over there, we talking to, I mean, have, have we ever looked at maybe purchasing some of their older buses? And have the ISD service those buses? If it'd be even cheaper for us to do that, but at least look into it. Because their fleet get older, we can be, you know, we can purchase some of those buses. We can have our own bus system, have the, I mean, they got their own maintenance department. Have the ISD services, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at, we somehow, and I understand about the money, but somehow, we gotta start thinking outside the box, instead of saying, oh, we ain't got no money, so we just gotta settle for what we get. I don't, I don't, I disagree with that. Sometimes you gotta shake some stuff up. And that means that we gotta go to another company and not go with Trinity to shake them up, say, listen, we're not, we're not gonna hire you, you, you gonna keep on giving us bad service. So let's shake them up a little bit. That's, that, I'm, I'm, that's my opinion. But I think we need to step, I think we need to contact the ISD, see what Mike says, he got some older fleet buses. I mean, they got a ton of buses over there, and they getting, I mean, they get buses new all the time.
Like, 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 yeah, we're saying, we put it out in the bid process, you get what you get. We, we take a chance on somebody who's out of state, and we're out here by ourselves trying to provide bus service. Or you go with somebody who you've used in the past. And so that's the route we took, and they were probably the least expensive than the other company. And that's what you usually do, is you get the least, the lowest responsible bidder. Had there been issues? Yes. This district has long ago got out of business busing, the business of food service. And all that was due to the financial condition, condition of this, of, of the district. And it was decisions made that we're here to educate students, and we contracted other services out. And that, over time, did then, and it still saves us money. We, I don't believe there's been any energy or effort put into us bringing back our, us doing our own bus service and our own bus fleet, because, again, I don't believe there's been any discussion at any magnitude to that, because we're, you know, we didn't have the money to do so. So if that's something that this board decides that we want to move forward on and just to look at it, we have to look at that sometime during the course of the current contract that we have, because we are in a three or five-year agreement with Trinity.
Yeah, I agree with that, but, I mean, I don't know what the, what the dollar amount, we, okay, let's throw a dollar amount at it. We paying one point three million dollars on bus service. If we take that one point million dollars, and we go to, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just, that's a number, don't, I'm just throwing a number out there. It could be five hundred thousand, it doesn't matter, I'm just throwing, the number doesn't matter. What I'm talking about is the process. If we take that money and we enter to an agreement with the ISD, the ISD is there to help us. That's why the ISD is there, to provide. I mean, even if we have the ISD run front and, and, and whatever we do, I'm just saying. We need to start, I'm, I'm just saying, we need to start thinking outside the box instead of settling. That's my whole point. It ain't, I mean, okay, let's start thinking outside the box, because Trinity is causing of, perception is reality. And we will lose families because Trinity is not doing their job. Perception is reality, people, perception is reality.
And I'm not saying, you know, that, what you're saying, I, I don't understand how we're losing, and it could be. I've had no one come to me and say, I'm taking, I'm pulling my kid out because the transportation is not dependable, it's not this and not that, because we're the only district that's providing transportation. So if they, if they take their kids out of our school district, they're going to provide transportation for their, for their students. So I have not heard that, you know, but, but when we put the bid out, the ISD didn't bid for bus services. They, they did not bid on, we asked them, would they bid on providing bus services for our general ed pop, our general ed population? They would not, they don't do that. They didn't, they didn't put in a bid to provide services for us.
Well, I call it the silent customer, because silent customers ain't gonna come to you and say, I'm leaving. They just gonna leave and not say anything. Maybe that's why a lot of, listen, we've lost a lot of our kids who went to prevail, and guess what? Them parents get their kids over to prevail. Prevail don't, don't provide bus service. They gotta get their kids over there, and they do it. They bypass us, whether they get the neighbor or whoever, auntie, uncle, grandma, they get their kids over there.
But that's gotta be something other than transportation, is all I'm saying, Mr. Monk.
Any other questions, comments, discussion on the contract listings? Superintendent's comments?
Thank you. Well, we've started a new year, and I am excited for our students, our staffing. Because again, our staff goes through a lot of sacrifices to make sure that we provide good educational opportunities for our students. So first of all, I want to say thank you so much to our teaching staff, our administrators, and all the support staff and the board for supporting the efforts of us making sure that we service all students regardless of what they're, where they are coming from or where they are starting. So I do greatly appreciate all of the assistance that each one gives. So thank you very much. So we do have a number of new hires. I will make sure that I get the background information that you have requested. I will get that to you in the next couple of days. And we've given all of the students and the parents the handbook that the administrative staff worked on this summer. And we are collecting the data to see who is turning in those slips to confirm that they actually have the, those handbooks. And I know our clerical staff is reaching out to the families that have not turned in those, those signed papers. So we will be getting new books to them if they say that they did not receive it. Because I have had a few parents tell me that they're pretty sure that they're stuck in their son or daughter's lockers. So we're making sure that they get those. We also have opportunities for a number of grants. One is for, of course, the Travel Club, and I'm working with Mr. Brewley to get that underway. I'm not sure how much we will be getting, but I'm gonna try, ask them for every penny that we may need. So hopefully, we'll be successful in that. Also, we have, the staff have worked on the security, safety grant. And anybody want to review it, this is the grant in itself. And the total amount that we're requesting is right at a quarter of a million dollars. There are a lot of things that we need to do to bring our building, we'll get new equipment anyway, and some new cameras and such. So we're hopeful, because there was a lot of hard work that went in with this. It was our curriculum director, Elizabeth Jensen, Bob Taylor, he's over our security, and also Robin Samuel, who's technology. And I know there are a few other people that worked on this grant, but I want to say thank you very much to them. So we should be hearing about this, I believe, it's in December, and they'll be, the state will be awarding those out. I am happy to say that all of the letters that went out for layoffs, they were recalled. All the staff that received a letter, that was a layoff letter notice, did get a recall letter. And we were able to bring most of them back, I believe it was two people that had opportunities elsewhere and that they had resigned anyway. But, but all of the other staff members did come back, so we're, and they're excited, and we're excited for them. As was stated earlier, Ms. Knop, Linda Knop retired from the district after being in this one school district for fifty-one years. I want to say thank you so much. I want to say thank you so much, Ms. Knott, for all of your service that you've provided all of our students over the years. The many families that you've, um, impacted, uh, the love that you have for, uh, not only the students, but this school district. So I wish you the very best in, uh, your new, um, your second chapter of your life. Thank you so much for sharing that with us these 51 years. And then we have our auditors are in this week. Um, we are making the final preparations with them. And, um, so we're getting, making some great headway. So we're looking forward to, um, their report, um, come October. And that is my comment, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm superintendent. Uh, committee reports. Business committee.
Uh, the business committee, man, the report is on the back of your packet if you have it printed out. It's the last page. Um, we met on September 11th, Christina, Teresa and I. Um, we went over the financial report, payment of bills, purchase order listing, contract listing and found everything to be in order. And our met, our meeting actually was two hours and 12 minutes. All about the numbers.
All right, any questions other chair? Thank you, Ms. Walker. Policy committee. Mr. Mark.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we met on Wednesday, September 12th at 10:00 AM. Um, myself, Ms. Voorhees, Ms. Escalante, Ms. Davis was, uh, present. Um, A, policy guidelines. We had some great feedback from everybody. Um, it was reported to us by Ms. Davis that we have 1104 enrolled on the books. Tw- uh, 1029 were in seats. We have at this time 72 seniors that are currently enrolled. Uh, the new guideline handbook has been delivered to every student. Ms. Davis is gonna follow up with her administration staff. To ensure that all those signed copies are on file. Um, attendance, um, you know, we adopted a new attendance policy. Um, that's one of our top priorities, uh, for this year. Um, DHS and clerical staff have been calling, um, on current absences. Letters, uh, will be going out if needed by AM. We also mentioned that, you know, although DHS is stepping up, our staff need to, uh, be definitely running front. To make sure there's no, well, DHS thought we was doing it, we thought DHS was doing it, and then it don't get done. So, uh, Teresa will follow up with her administration staff to make sure that everybody stays on top of that. Um, letters will be sent out, um, after 10 days from DHS, three days from Seminole. Um, checkup process to ensure everyone, uh, stays on top of the transparency procedure with monthly report. Um, out to the superintendent. Uh, superintendent to report to the board with monthly updates. Including will be the percentage of students with signed receipts of new handbooks, possible ice cream incentive. We talked about incentive programs that we want to start, um, as us three, um, I kinda, uh, volunteered, Ms. Voorhees. Escalante, and they agreed. So I, I knew they would, so. Uh, we do a possible ice cream incentive, uh, for every class that brings in their handbooks by the end of the month. Um, and then also Ms. Davis will make sure that handbook is gonna be placed on the website. Um, so all, everyone to view that. Additional items discussed, uh, I also brought up, which I solicited their services and they agreed. Um, we're gonna start doing a top 20, um, high school kids lunching last Friday of each month. Um, that will be catered by us three board members. Uh, we'll get the list from the, uh, superintendent or her administrator. Um, and I think that's a good incentive program. We call it Lunch with the Board is what we call it. So it's a new program we wanna start, um, here in the high school and eventually we wanna move over to the elementary school. And do the same thing at the elementary school. Um, change image of district. Um, we threw around the, um, and it was a consensus agreement. Um, and it was idea that, um, school uniforms, um, possibly we need to implement that by the 2019, 2020 school year. Um, we feel that that is a, um, how can I say, that would be a continually, um, re, uh, branding. Uh, Mount Clemens School District that will help us. Um, and you know, I know this was, this has been brought up before. We kinda talked about it and we got any legs. Um, but we three, um, agree that we're gonna kinda put our heads together and bring some type of information to the full board for us to discuss. Um, and move forward on that. Um, cost analyst, uh, I'll be responsible for putting together cost analyst. Um, I'll look at policies as far as our previous policies on, you know, if there are any in there for our uniforms. Um, and with that, uh, we also wanna, uh, we told the superintendent, we kinda talked about some ideas. Um, you know, dollar days for the jeans and the hats, you know, I know we, when I was back in middle school, we had a thing where it's that the kids can wear a baseball hat. You know, you couldn't wear them in school, but if you're on Friday, you bring in a dollar, you can wear your baseball hat. Um, and we ran that and we raised enough money to actually give the middle school kids two dances a year. Um, and they were excited about that. They got dressed up, you thought they was going to the prom. Hair's done, outfits, the whole nine yards and they hit a ball. Um, so that's something that we had talked about, um, that Ms. Davis, you know, we maybe can implement with her staff. Um, and those are all the comments. Did I miss anything?
Any question other chair? I just have a couple of questions, uh, to the committee and one of them is around, you won't find a policy about uniform. Uh, because if there was one, uh, that would've been implemented. There were, there were times, uh, when this district has gone to uniform dress code, not a uniform per se. Um, we, we did the cost analysis, had different companies come in and talk about their uniforms. Uh, and it was always some issue, there would always seem to be that there would be some cost prohibitive to have a uniform. And so at times we would go to uniform dressing, example, dark pants, light shirt. Uh, it was a voluntary program. I remember Dr. Cecilia Weathers was one of our principals who implemented it. And, uh, Dr. Uh, yeah, I can't, but there was another elementary, we, we had three elementaries. Uh, two of the elementaries, uh, implemented it on a voluntary basis. And they had maybe close to 60, 70% of the student population, uh, uh, involved in, in that type of thing. Um, it was always, we never, the board never implemented a strict uniform policy. Because we thought it would be cost prohibitive to, uh, many parents. Uh, so that's why we went with the idea of uniform dressing. Um, and, uh, it, it was, again, it was a voluntary program and it, it never really, like you're using your term, it never really caught legs. I really never saw any problems, you know, with why it never caught legs, but it, it never did. One, it probably wasn't pushed, uh, since it was a voluntary program, it was not pushed, uh, that this is what we need to do. And, but, uh, to, you know, for my two cents, I wished I'd had it even though when I went to school. I, I've gone all across the country, um, and, um, from rural school districts, suburban school district. Uh, major urban school districts and many of these school districts have uniforms. Um, and I, and, and the kids don't have any problems with it. Uh, they, you know, they just put on their uniforms and they go to school. Uh, and I, I think it has its merits, uh, it has its benefits. One, you, you know, we had a, a situation that happened in the high school cafeteria about five or six years ago. Had we had a uniform, we'd have known immediately, or uniform dress code, we'd have known, known immediately that these kids weren't from our school. Coming into the cafeteria and causing all, all this.
That's one of the things we're talking about.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, I, you know, again, you won't find a policy in there about, about uniform. Or where this board has ever put a policy into this uniform. But we did, uh, go live with the concept of a uniform dress code for, you know, for a number of years. And the other one was about the Lunch with the Board. Talked to us, or, or, or is that just something you're, you're putting in, you're, you're talking about now and you're bringing more steps to, to.
Right, yeah, we bring more steps in, yeah. Yeah, we bring more steps in, like I said, you know, we wanna fish out where that we get into all the schools. Uh, we started with over here, um, and we'll get that, that looks to be submitted for, you know, grade, grades. Attendance, behavior, you know what I'm saying, kinda like the top 20, you know what I'm saying? So, but yeah, we're looking at, you know, it's a, it's a jumpstart to moving it to throughout the district. And I think, I think it'd be pretty cool, you know? We, yeah, we look, yeah, we, we, and then ice cream social, you know, you know, board member showing up at an elementary school, hey, you know what I'm saying? Ice cream, ice cream, who wants some ice cream?
Thank you. Any, just a question other chair?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mark, I know you was talking about, uh, uniform policy, that nature. Uh, I'm not sure what they have here in the place now, but, um, you may wanna think about the future reference in your policy. Uh, for students wear lanias with their ID on it. That's where, identify our students and give that streamline, you know, to uniformity. Uh, we can start there. Something simple, something easy and, uh, most people probably donate a lanyard for our students. So just throwing that out there.
No, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, that'll tap right into that, yeah.
We don't get together, uh, we don't get together a whole too much or all the time. So just throwing that idea on the table. Do what you want with it. As I say, throw it against the wall. See if it's sick or see if it's stink.
Additional questions other chair? Thank you, Mr. Mark. Curriculum personnel.
Okay, right out the gate, I'm gonna take the bullet for the information set of package about the curriculum personnel, but these packets on hiring personnel. We did have a cur- uh, Personnel Curriculum Meeting September the 11th about 1 o'clock in the PM. We did discuss all this, uh, Ms. Jensen was there, um, superintendent was talking about the principals and how they vetted these individuals. Uh, I did send my notes out through my stupidity of IT functions. I didn't put a caption, so it didn't go out to the email like I thought it did. I thought it was something wrong with my service. So that, I would take the bullet on that. So I'm not gonna throw superintendent on the bus for that. But we will make sure that, um, um, all curriculum vitals or whatever for that individual will be in the board packet from now on. Okay, so I'm just gonna give y'all some assurance, cause I know y'all feeling uneasy about making these votes tonight. But we did talk about that lethally at the curriculum personnel meeting. Uh, we talked a few more things. I'm gonna pull my notes up for y'all to know what we talked about. Okay, uh, first thing we talked about was, uh, possible confi- uh, reconfiguration of the schools from K through 6. Because right now the middle school, we're K through 5 over at Seminole. And what we're having is, we looked at, um, enrollment sheet. For one thing, our enrollment is pretty decent right now. It's pretty, it's up, it's above what we projected. But we just trying to figure out why we's having a big loss in two grades. Uh, two grades being hit the most is grade 6 and grade, or 10th grade. So those two are we hitting the most, most difficult to hit. So we're looking at reconfiguration and not something we gonna do, something we gonna try to figure out. I ain't saying we, we gonna move this route. We gonna talk about this and figure out how to make it work. Uh, if we losing that 6th grade, maybe we can try to make it K through 6 or whatever, but we trying to figure out how that work, power look and how, um, things work with the, um, facilities we have. Uh, our current total goal as of September 11th, this, uh, Madam Superintendent, you can tell me if it's different. It was 1024 that day and our project was 1,000. Where are we at now?
Um, 1,040.
So we at 1040. So our goal for budget was 1,000 students. September 11th, we had 1,024 and today is, Madam Superintendent, we have 1,040. So that's, that's good for our bookkeeping in. Talked about the drops, teaching enrollment act defines, hold on one second. We talked about the, and it was a, it was a short meeting, it was very quick. We talked about growth being used as a form of stu-, uh, teacher rating. It's gonna change this year. This is the year it's gonna be implemented. Last year we used different parameters. This year we're gonna focus on, I believe it's 40% growth.
Yes.
So that's something that's gonna be coming down the pipeline and that's more of the curriculum personnel or the curriculum director and the madam superintendent gonna be spearheading that.
Yeah, the, the 40% growth, I think that's part of the evaluation, not a growth of 40%.
Yes, correct. Correct. Uh, and I go right into personnel. We also talked about the configuration or how key is set up. Cause I, as the question was asked, you know, um, how is it set up? Is it a federal guidelines, a state guideline? And we went over the POI, ESC, um, ECSE and, uh, grade start program. Couple of parents asking those questions about bringing their children to, um, key at those levels and having those guidelines out. That's pretty much the gist of it. Ms. Walker, I forget anything?
I think you just spoke out of it. Reading it right off your phone. He takes great notes, he does, he does.
He just don't disseminate good.
But once again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lay down under the Trinity bus tires about those, uh, curriculum information, all right? So I'll get under the bus for that. That's my fault.
Dave, I'm not driving the bus.
Well, they, they probably hiring next year.
Any other comments, questions other chair? Thank you, Dr. Max Fadden. Mr. Lennanberry, if you would, sir.
Thank you. Uh, we met right the, the day before the back to school bash, so we were all prepared. We, we had a table at the back to school bash, gave out a lot of information, news to ourselves and parents that knew that we were available and there with information on substance abuse. Uh, our next major project is the National Drug Take Back Day, October 27th, which is a Saturday. We're at Wilson Gym again from 10 to 2 as we are twice a year, every year, April and October. Uh, also that day will be the Hollywood Spooktacular downtown for the kids and of course the trunk and treat at the county parking garage. Very, very well attended events by our young people, so, uh, very excited about those. Good, uh, community service opportunity for our young people as well, the trunk and treat and hot and spooktacular helping kids. Costume parades and all kinds of that fun stuff. Uh, we'll be the next week right here to, uh, ta- tackle our Drug Take Back Day. And we can work on the Career Fair and our Real Talk, which I believe is going to be November. Don't quote me on that, I'll get you back on date next week or next meeting on when the Real Talk is going to be.
Any questions, uh, Mr. Lennanberry? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Legislative, I have no report unless superintendent's had a legislative meeting. No report. Athletic ad hoc committee, Dr. Max Fadden.
Uh, we didn't have one. But. We got a schedule. We didn't have a meeting, so we have a schedule here for volleyball and basketball. But be out, out seriously, we, in, uh, Personnel Curriculum Committee, we did talk about athletics. We did talk about how to make things better with our athletic programs. Where I have the superintendent put together some information for we gather that first before we even call a meeting. Cause there's no need to call a meeting without getting information together. So I'm just putting it out, letting y'all know, we, we're working on it. But what I'm doing with athletic ad hoc is I'm putting, putting a little, putting together with the curriculum personnel because it kinda falls in the same piece. And then from there, when we need to have a full blown ad hoc committee, we will call it. Okay, fair enough.
Any questions other chair? Thank you, Dr. Max Fadden. There has not been an educational foundation meeting. I talked with a couple of other members asking for a breakout of what they distributed, uh, for the graduation. I'm still awaiting, uh, that report. Um, to find out how much money is left, um, in the, uh, bank account for, for that. Because we, there haven't been any fundraising activities in a couple of years, uh, for, you know, for the educational foundation. So, that is, we haven't had a meeting. I'm waiting on the information. Board comments. Mrs. Escalante.
Well, I wanna welcome everybody back. Um, I feel like they've been back for a while, so it doesn't seem technically like this is the first meeting since we've been back in session. But, um, it's, it's been good. My kids have been very excited to be at school. Um, they don't give me a hard time getting up. Um, they're excited about their teachers. I think the teachers have put a lot of effort into making, making it, um, fun. An, an environment that continues to entice them to be there and to learn. So I'm appreciative of that. And, um, I wanna thank, um, the teachers that came tonight as citizens and I appreciate your comments. I appreciate, um, what you've said and just know that you're being heard. Um, thank you for being respectful and eloquent in, in what you expressed as well. Um, the beginning of the year is always crazy, I think, for everybody, for the staff, for the kids, for the parents, for the bus drivers, for the custodians, for all of the staff. Um, I think it takes time to transition and get into a routine, um, but I think that, um, we've got a good team here in this district and. we've got a good team here in this district and, um, people that really care and want to see our district succeed. Um, I'm happy about the numbers that we're at, enrollment wise, at this stage in the game. I know we spoke at one of our meetings, and you said this time last year, we were only at about eight hundred and forty. And we're at one thousand forty, so, um, that's, that's motivating. So keep sending your kids, because we love them. And, um, there's a lot of good things going on in this district despite, you know, what you may hear out in the community. Um, form your opinions based on what you've seen with your own eyes, not with what you hear, because not everything is true. Um, and with that being said, once a bather, always a bather.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Escalante.
Thank you.
Mr. Brew.
I appreciate, uh, my committee mates sort of taking over as I was gone that day that we had the meeting, so I appreciate them doing that. Um, I, I would just like to have included, we talked about this, and maybe I missed it, um, but I would like included, as we have our financial information, a month-by-month plan, uh, that we talked about, that the board was going to have, that in October we're doing this, in November we're doing this, in January we're having that. We've talked about this a couple of months now, and I haven't quite seen it on paper, and I'm getting a little concerned. It's already September, I would have thought we would have had it in the packet. And so that we don't miss dates, that we have to review various things by, just as our committee, uh, or the business committee has a list of contracts, dates, expirations, which is really, really helpful. Um, I think we have to have that in this packet. And I'm a little concerned we don't, because we have talked about it now for a couple of months. So I would like to see that, uh, next time around, um, and other than that, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brew. Mr. Voorhees.
First of all, I would, uh, I would like to thank the teachers that came today. Uh, again, your concerns should not fall on deaf ears, we are all concerned, and we also appreciate everything you do. And I know that, uh, lots of times it's your personal resources that, uh, uh, go into your classroom and, yeah, for the education of our most important product, and that is our students. Again, we do appreciate that very much. Um, please don't get me wrong, uh, when, by concern about the, uh, hirings. All of these people are needed, I know they've all been vetted, and, and I appreciate that. I just felt a little uncomfortable, and Dave, I don't, I don't blame you, I, I don't blame anybody. I just, I think if, as long as we have that information, I'm fine. But, um, I, I know that we need these hires, obviously we have areas that need to be filled. Um, Dave, again, I appreciate the, uh, the, uh, fall sports, um, schedule, and, uh, I, I talked with Miss Davis, and hopefully we will have something for, uh, homecoming for a program. And, uh, again, I will take care of that, so, okay? So that's my, oh, gift. Uh, the all-class reunion for, uh, the alumni went off very, very well. Um, like I told our president, I was there at five thirty and left by seven thirty. So all the old folks, I just, I just can hardly believe that I'm coming up on fifty years, it's crazy. But goes by like that. So, uh, anyway, there was a pretty good crowd, um, maybe not as many as years past, but, uh, a nice crowd, and it, and it certainly covered all the years, um, that we've been here. With that, once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Mrs. Walker.
Well, I echo what my, um, other board members said, the numbers look good, and that's awesome. That's, we're in a good place. Um, but most of all, for the teachers that came here, we heard what you said, and we appreciate you. And we, um, I go to a lot of schools, there is no one like you. There, there are not teachers like you anywhere. So for anyone considering bringing their kids here, we have the best of the best teachers. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart, there's just no one like you. I mean, my youngest is who she is, has a lot because of Mary, a lot, as, as my others, so. There's just, there's no one, she's Todd, ma, there, there's no one, there are no teachers out there like you. So I, I hope that, seriously, whoever's watching this, believe us, they're, they're the best. And, um, that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Dr. McFadden.
You know, this year, we started off with, um, expectations. And, uh, the first expectation that I thought was a realistic expectation was the number of students coming in to get a justifiable budget. Most of you know, the last couple of years I had my numbers, and someone else had their own numbers, and it went from there. But it's better to have a projection of expecting the worst and hoping for the best. And right now, we still in that progress, you know, we, Count Day is not here yet, so, you know, we just, just keep moving forward. But at least we get an idea what's going on with our budget, and that's, that's, well, that's key. Because if we get that together, then we can start, um, awarding the people that really need to be awarded, such as our staff and, and the students in the, in our, in our district. Uh, for Ms. Knop and our residents, I wish all of them Godspeed and, um, God blessings to all of them. They have, they are very much appreciated, especially Ms., well, not especially anybody, I don't, I don't sing anybody out, but we appreciate all of them. Um, we are a district that has been hogtied by providing stuff that's mandated by federal guidelines that functions or go against us when we compete against other districts. Uh, Mr. Monk talked about the transportation services, I know we have talked with ISD about different things. There's certain things that cannot be done, and that's no fault of ours or anybody else, but that is something that's mandated for us to do because of the way our economic profile is for our district, such as providing free lunch, free meals, free athletics, things that other people do not have to provide as free. So when we work at our constraints, it's totally different, being smaller, being in our economic profile to the other districts around us. So I think we're doing pretty good. And I say that because I know a lot of people in the community ask the question, why didn't you have this, why didn't you have that? Well, the reason we don't have it, and you're more than welcome to come speak with your superintendent, who is also the chief financial officer, they'll let you know and understand that a lot of the financing is already spent before we even get it. I think it's mandated. So just bring that up. Um, want to talk about the fall sports, and we are working on our athletic program. Um, I just want to let everybody know that we are working on our athletic program. Uh, we have, um, a team in place and people doing the things that need to be done. But we have had some volleyball games and some football games. And, and if I'm correct, the volleyball team is pretty competitive, I have to smile about that. I have to control my daughter down a little bit more, but she's doing pretty good. And, uh, the team's doing great too, so I'm not going to take it from the teams. It's a team sport, there's no I in team, so they're doing well, and so is the football. Uh, you don't speak this much, I try to keep it down short, but I feel that these are things that need to be said. Those are my comments, and I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. I should have opened up to you like I did.
I like to say, welcome back to everybody. Um, it seems like only yesterday that I was sending people off to enjoy their vacation and go on cruises and get a convertible and let the wind, put the top down and let the wind blow through your hair. And here we are, uh, back, you know, probably three weeks into school already, two and a half, three weeks into school already. But, uh, welcome back to everybody. I had the opportunity to attend, uh, the back to school bash on a couple of occasions, uh, because I work right across the track, and so I snuck out of work, uh, mid-morning, came over, stuck my head in for a little while, and then snuck back in, um, mid-afternoon, stick my head back in, uh, just to see, uh, what was going on, and it was a constant flow of people, uh, coming in and out of the building, which was very encouraging, uh, and I guess those numbers are reflective, uh, that we, we, we've got, we've surpassed the number of students who we had projected, what we had projected to do, and, um, hey, by all means, you know, keep them coming, um, we, we can, we can use, uh, more students, uh, here. Also had the opportunity to, um, to be here at the, um, welcome back, uh, breakfast for the staff. Um, uh, Ms. Escalante and Mrs. Walker were both there, uh, also in attendance. Uh, and the, uh, teachers, after a little bit of prodding by me, they showed a little enthusiasm and a little excitement. I realized it was eight o'clock in the morning, first day back, and, you know, just having breakfast, and then who's the superintendent turn the mic over to? Me, you know, so I had to put some little energy in, in, into the room, but, uh, it, it, it was a good, a good event. Um, a lot of, um, energized, um, smiling faces in the room, uh, professional educators that were ready to, uh, to get back in there and, and do what they do best, is that's, and educate students. Um, football team is competing, the volleyball team is competing, uh, so we're, we're glad to see that. Um, just a reminder to my colleagues on the board, you received an email, uh, about, uh, participation in the blueprint process that, uh, Ms. Watson, Sarah Watson, uh, uh, did a presentation to the board at, at our last meeting. Um, and there was information in the email relative to those three dates, and one in October, November, and December. Uh, so if you can, uh, uh, find it time in your schedule to participate in that, um, we're looking, we'll be looking forward to, uh, sending a team, uh, of folks up to participate in that process uh, for the betterment, uh, uh, of the educational process here, uh, for the students that we service here in the Mount Clemens Community School District. I was, um, called by a couple of residents, um, a couple of weeks ago. They were concerned about an ad that was being run on WJR. WJR ran it as a news story about Clintondale offering free lunch to all of their students. Uh, and this, this, the, the citizens were, were, were kind of upset about that because they felt it was not a news story, but in fact, a free ad for Clintondale. Because I, I shared with tho- with those residents, no, Mount Clemens has been providing free lunch for students for years, uh, and it was never a news, uh, story. So there had to be some kind of, Clintondale got some ends with somebody at JR. Um, and the, the residents, uh, stated that they were going to contact WJR, the management, and, and express their concerns that this was not a news item, but an ad, uh, a free ad for Clintondale in their enrollment, you know, because Mount Clemens and other districts have been providing free lunch, uh, for, for their students for years. And if they were, they gonna say the same thing about those, about those other, uh, districts that provide free lunch, and it was not a news item, but they felt it was a free advertisement for Clintondale. So I, I thought that was interesting. And tonight, we heard, uh, my colleagues, um, around the board table, around the hiring of, of teachers and, and support staff in the district. One thing, one, I'm glad that we're in a position to be hiring folks. Uh, it's not, it's be, it's, it's far, and particularly the number of people that we, that we, we hired some folks at our last meeting, and because of resignation, I think there were three resignations, uh, so with those are replacement, then there were some, two new hires. And I understand my concerns, uh, from my colleagues about getting background information and background paperwork, but I like to remind us that our responsibility is to hire and fully vet out the superintendent. Everybody else goes through the superintendent, I'm pretty, I know that there was a team of folks who vetted all that information, and I understand the, the needs or the desires to have that information, and I'm not against that. But when we get the information, you still won't know the people. You'll know their names, where they went to school, and, and blah, blah, blah. Because we, as a board, are not involved in that process. We are involved in the process of fully vetting the superintendent. Uh, but again, there, I have no, no problems, uh, and the chair of the committee, um, sort of took the bullet for not getting that information to us, but again, we're, we're, I'm pretty sure we weren't hiding anything, we're, you know, sneaking anything under the table, um, and it just, um, because of the level of uncomfortability I felt with, with, um, the votes tonight, I just felt that they had to say that. But we're, we're not trying to hide anything from anybody, and I, I'm, I'm quite sure that there was a staff, a, a committee of folks that, uh, vetted the, uh, applicants out thoroughly and brought forward recommendation to the board for hire, uh, for the best qualified people. Um, uh, as they're saying, um, my colleagues, don't believe the hype, don't believe what you hear. Take the time, come up to our schools, go into our buildings, see, hear, and listen to what's going on. See for yourself what's going on. There is quality teaching and learning that are going on in the classroom in, in our school system. We may be, we're, we're smaller, uh, but we are still able to provide a quality education, uh, for the students that, uh, come to the Mount Clemens Community School District. And, and where your students are a name when you come to the Mount Clemens Community School District, and not just a number. Uh, so, you know, again, come up, see what we're doing, volunteer to do some things, um, a lot of great programs and activities going on here for our students. And there are a lot of things that we cannot do, uh, without the help of volunteers, uh, and, and other people in the community that, that, uh, provide time, energy, and effort and resources, uh, to our students. Uh, I think that, uh, homecoming is October fifth, and we compete against Southfield Christian at seven PM, uh, right here at the Bather Stadium. I think that's all I may have, those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Walker. Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries, meeting's adjourned at eight twenty-six in the PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.